Call to order, City of Cannon Falls City Council Meeting for Tuesday, March 19th, 2024. If I could get a roll call, please. Gesmi.
Here.
Bro.
Here.
Jepson.
Here.
Johnson.
Here.
Cronenberger.
Here.
Lindell.
Here.
Montgomery. Here. If we could please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
If I could get a motion to approve tonight's agenda. I got a motion from Lindell, a second from Jepson. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carries. Public input. Public input is intended to afford the public an opportunity to address concerns to the city council. Public input will be no longer than 30 minutes in total length. Each speaker will have no more than three minutes to speak. Speakers may address topics relevant to the governance of the city. Speakers must sign up in advance and must provide their name, address, and the topic they intend to address. Comments must be on topic, respectful, pertinent to city business, and adhere to the applicable data privacy rules. Any speaker that violates these rules will be asked to sit down. If the speaker refuses to comply, they may be removed from the meeting. Speakers shall not address topics that are the subject of a public hearing. All such comments shall be made at the public hearing. The city council will generally not act on issues raised by the public input, but may choose to schedule consideration of the item on a future agenda. Greg Kurtz, Cannon Valley Fair.
I just wanted to bring to you guys so you knew what we had going on at the fair this year. It's getting full, the summer is. May 4th, we've got another possible horse race going on. May 11th, another possible horse race going on. May 25th is our Memorial Day Madness, a two-day demolition derby, which last year we had approximately 230 cars there, so there was a lot of people. June 17th, we've got a bike race coming through. It shouldn't involve the city as far as police or barricades or anything. They've got that all under control. They figure it'll be about 200 bikers in town. That'll be a two-day type deal. I just talked yesterday to the Lions Club. They would like to have their Father's Day pancake breakfast down there again on the 17th of June. Then we run into a four-day deal, Cannon Valley Fair, which is filled up. Now, that will be the 3rd through the 6th this year instead of the 1st through the 4th. The 4th will be the same as it always is. Parade on the 4th, horse races, fireworks that evening. That'll stay the same. July 22nd, there's another bike race coming through the fairgrounds. That one would be, it's only held on the trails going to Red Wing and going out to the lake. What they need from us is just a place to stage, and that would run from 6:30 in the morning till 11:30 in the morning. Just a place for water, bike, attempt to repair bikes if needed. But that'll just be on the trail. There'll be no road on that at all. Excuse me. That was the 22nd of July. August 30th, another bike race coming through. That's a three-day. Those folks were here and talked to you here about a month and a half ago, two months ago, and I'm going to be meeting with them tomorrow again to get all the finals on that. So that should be, they're expecting anywhere from 300 to 400 bikers in town for that, and that will take no city blockage or blocking streets off or anything. September 28th, that's the last Saturday in September, another possible horse race. October 5th, the following Saturday, would be another horse race in town. That's just what we've got going so far. So we've had a pretty busy summer going on at the fairgrounds. Hopefully, it'll bring a bunch of people into our town. So I'm going to stick around. If you guys have any questions on any of these things after the meeting, I'd be more than happy to answer. Thank you.
Thank you. Consent agenda. Consent agenda items may be adopted under one motion as presented or may be removed for discussion and resolution as council business. I'll read them off tonight. Item A, just incorrect claims for the accounting period that ended on March 14th, 2024. Item B, meeting minutes for February 20th, 2024 city council meeting. Item C, approved general obligation bond agreement to John Birch Park user agreements. D, second reading and adoption ordinance 404 and summary of publication and ordinance of the City of Cannon Falls, Minnesota, amending City Code Chapter 152 related to zoning. Item E, approved Minnesota Public Employees Association contract. Item F, Resolution 2740, providing for post-employment healthcare savings plan for supervisors. Item G, approved John Birch Park football scoreboard sponsorship signs. Item H, Resolution 2741, authorizing creation and use of the extreme risk protection order fund. Item I, approved firearms disposal. Item J, approved trade-ins and purchase of John Deere 1585 lawnmower. Item K, approved Cannon Valley Fair water truck use for request. Item L, approved replacement of makeup air unit and exhaust fan for wastewater treatment plant. And item M, approved alley paving quotes. Is there any items that the council would like to pull down? It is green. If we're having any technical difficulties, microphone is on. Are there anything that the council would like to have pulled down?
Can we pull down E, please?
Item E, approved Minnesota Public Employees Association contract. That will be pulled down to become council business. Item D. Anything else from the council? I'd like to pull down item K. Cannon Valley Fair water truck. That will be council business. Item E. Anything else from the council? Hearing none, I accept a motion to approve the consent agenda. Motion from Jepson, second from Diane. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carries. Brings us to council business. Item A, 2024 street overlay project. Bill is not here, but we have WHKS.
Yep. Darren from WHKS against you. So, thanks, Mayor. So tonight I have three agenda items, kind of all project-related items. So first of all is the 2024 street overlay project. So last week, we took quotes on this project. This is a quote project, which is, for Minnesota statute, less than $175,000 project. So the map that's included in your packet is the area out at the industrial park. It's mostly Holiday Avenue. That's in poor condition. So the plan for that is just a simple mill and overlay out there and replace any broken concrete curbs if need be. So the city received four quotes. They're listed in the memorandum there. The low quote was from McNamara Contracting of Rosemount in the amount of $124,250, and our cost opinion was $150,000. So all the quotes were under that, and so we were, would like to recommend that McNamara Contracting would be awarded the project in the amount of $124,250.
Any questions for Darren from the council or discussion?
I have one.
Okay.
This is kind of off the map. Holiday Avenue, is that, do we know what that was built as? Was that built as a heavy-use road for tonnage-wise?
I'm not 100% sure, but I assume that it was heavier due to being in the industrial park.
The reason I'm asking is because we do have a sign that says no through trucks, but I don't think legally we can stop them from using that as the shortcut, but it gets pounded pretty hard. And I don't know if what we're doing with that overlay is going to wear okay with the heavy use. I don't know if that should be adjusted.
Well, we can look into that. Council member Gesmi, as of right now, it's a proposed two-inch overlay, so we're just milling off the edges and then leaving kind of the center portion of it. And then, so the main part where the trucks are driving is still that existing thickness plus two inches. So it's just the edges, as long as they're not, you know, driving mainly by the curb. So it is technically a thicker section, as long as they stay in the middle of the road, so.
Okay.
Thank you.
Any other questions or comments from the council? Hearing none, I would accept a motion to approve the 2024 street overlay project. Motion from Johnson, second from Gesmi. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carries. Moves us on to item B, John Birch Park improvements project. Darren, you want to handle that one, too?
Yes. All right. Thank you, Mayor. So this is a project a lot of people are very interested in. So this is the John Birch Park that is in the center of town, that high school plays baseball and football games at, and a lot of activities happen there. So as a lot of people know, that there's an old limestone wall that is, kind of holds up the westerly side of the stands and kind of allows for the ball field to be played on. So that limestone is crumbling. It is in very poor shape, and so the city received a grant to replace that wall. And then also including in that is the replacement of the dugout, first base dugout, and the concrete seating area just above the wall. So we've gone ahead and prepared plans for that. We're ready to go out to bid, so what we're requesting is that the council authorize advertising for bids. The bids will be received in about a month on April 11th, and then we'll come back to the council on April 16th. So the project, just kind of as a whole, is going to kind of affect the summer baseball and even into the school football season. So after June 17th, there won't be any baseball out there, and then the project completion is October 25th. So if the contractor uses all that time, it will also affect the fall football season, because I know there's a number of people that use those, that seating area for football as well. So, yeah, we're just asking for, the request to advertise for bids.
Any questions from the council? Hearing none, I would look for a motion to approve John Birch Park improvement project. Motion from Laura.
Second.
Second from Mr. Jepson. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carries.
Just want to make one comment. You said it'll affect the football, but not the football field.
Correct. He had mentioned the people who like to sit up there, yes.
Yes.
Football games are going to be okay.
Correct, yes.
Just for the seating.
The seating, so additional or temporary seating will have to be provided.
Yep. All right. Item C, 72nd Avenue Way improvements. Darren, busy night for you.
Right, yes, yes. So just last week, so this is the project that's kind of in conjunction with the Hardwood Estates project, and so 72nd Avenue Way is currently the gravel road that's kind of the access to Hardwood Estates. So as part of that, the council directed us to prepare plans and get bids. So last week, we received 11 bids for that road. So, and the low bid was submitted by Albrightson Excavating from Woodville, Wisconsin. That's the same contractor that is on Hardwood Estates. So we feel that's a good idea, or good that they do that for both projects. So the low bid amount was $246,980, and our cost opinion was $254,000, so it was under our estimate. But tonight, you won't act on that bid because we have to go through the public assessment process. So what we're asking tonight is there are two resolutions in your packet. So the first one would be to set the resolution or have a resolution setting the amount for the assessment. So this was calculated based on the construction costs that were bid, a small contingency amount, and then the engineering for a grand total of $300,000. So then, that amount was then, per the council discussion of changing the assessment amount from 100% down to 50. So what we're asking tonight is setting the assessment amount for a total of $150,000. So if the council so passes this resolution, then they would have, setting a public hearing for this about a month from now on April 16. So then that's when the 10 property owners, one of them being the city, would have a chance to come and voice their opinions based on that assessment. So in your packet tonight is the bids, and then also the individual assessment roles. So you can see how much each person is individually being assessed. So tonight, as I mentioned, where the first resolution is setting the amount, and then the second resolution is calling for the public hearing, which would be April 16, 2024, at 6:30 at City Hall.
Any questions or comments from the council?
You said something about you included a contingency thing to bring up. If that's not used, does that get rebated to everybody proportionally, or does it just?
It's part of the assessment. So if, once you set the amount, then it would be part of the assessment. So it's just included in there. So we're, the assessment amount brought it up to that $300,000 amount, which is, generally, things will come up, hopefully not large dollar amounts. So we generally recommend having at least a contingency, but in the past, no, it's not rebated back to the people.
And at the same time, then, if it actually goes over, if we make it?
The city has to cover if it's more than the contingency that's set aside. Correct.
Thank you.
Any other questions or comments from the council? Hearing none, I would accept a motion to approve Resolution 2742 declaring the cost to be assessed and ordering preparation of proposed assessments. So move.
Second.
Motion from Derek, second from Diane. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carries. Which brings us to the second resolution for 72nd Avenue Way, the Resolution 2743, calling for the hearing on these assessments. Do we need any further discussion or just second item?
No.
Right. Motion from Gesmi. Second from Laura Cronenberger. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carries. Brings us to item D, which was E in our consent agenda, approve the Minnesota Public Employees Association contract. And Laura, you pull this one down.
Yeah, I just wanted to, if somebody can clarify and just, so I understand, for the section where we are changing the pay grade steps outside of the pay study, can somebody just elaborate why we're outside of the pay study and what that means?
Would this be?
Neil? We negotiated three contracts this year, and the first one was the police officers being beat. And when we got done negotiating that, and Lisa and Steve, you can help chime in, there was some negotiation done outside the pay study. We tried our best to keep the city in mind, but also keep the employees in mind and trying to keep people working for Cannon Falls instead of leaving. So we, as a committee, kept negotiating, and we ended up going outside the pay scale for the police officers. The next unit was, was Public Works Group, and that's the 49ers. And I can't quite remember where we landed with that, but we did move outside of that one also based on a hiccup, let's just put it that way, a hiccup in the pay study, if you remember that. And so the 49ers group brought it to our attention, and so that group was also outside the pay study. And the supervisors brought us a pretty big package of stuff, I would say, and when it came down to negotiations and reviewing all of the package, we felt that this was the most feasible, the most to get the thing done. So we did move outside the pay studies for the supervisors also.
If I could just add, I'll move to, arbitration is expensive, and we thought we could bump everything up and leave happy and not have to worry about expensive arbitration and negotiators and lawyers. Although we did go up the pay study, then we had to pay for it, too. We thought it was fair for everybody, and everybody seemed happy and hoped that it would make everybody comfortable to stay here and not be always looking.
You know, there's a couple of them. If you look at the list, we moved up on a couple, stayed on a couple, and offered a memorandum of understanding for one of them. And with that, we had to look at our non-union group.
Yep.
And treat them fairly and keep them on par with the unions. So hence why you see the next section of, so negotiating contracts is difficult business. I know I've done a lot of them, and I've had a lot of different people in my, on my committee, and we got them done. We fought hard for the city, but I think we also got some good contracts, you know, three and three on the second and third years is inflation, normal inflation, let's say. So I think we did do, we did fight for the city, and we did get a couple of step increases, but we also got 3% and 3% on the back end of it, too, so.
I felt good about it, or done. It was a lot, but, yeah. So all three of those, so basically, you need the three different union contracts, are they, I don't know, three-year contracts then?
Yes, they're all the same. They're all three years. They're all of-
Why are you doing one? You can make it five.
You on the, you on the grid? Let's make them five. So I think we did okay. Where we're going to get the money for 2024 is, I did add, when we did the, knowing this was coming, I did add some into the wages. Did I add enough? I didn't know where we were going to land. No, I did not add enough. We will fix that when we do the 2025 budget, and hopefully, this is a shout-out to the department heads that, hence, we gave them a couple of step increases. Maybe they can save some money on the back end of their, on their budget. That's a shout-out. And so, with that said, that's where we landed.
My thanks to the negotiating team and all the rest. I know when we had the police, one, it was like $27,000 plus increase. Do we have figures for the public works and the supervisor non-union accomplish that increase, kind of a ballpark for here?
I do not.
Okay. Do we have it next week or where to send it?
I can send it to you, or I can, you can wait. I can get it done when 25 budget, if we're going to start that in a couple of months. So you'll see what the increases are when that comes through.
Any other questions or comments from the council? Hearing none, I would seek approval of item D, which was E, the Minnesota Public Employees Association contract. Motion from Lisa, second from Derek. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carries. Brings us to council business, item E, which was K, the approved Cannon Valley Fair water truck use request. I pulled that down. I wanted to have discussion on this. To be on the record, I fully support the Cannon Valley Fair. The use of the water truck is being asked for things outside of the fair. I thought this was a good time to have a discussion of how often is the water truck used, what is the cost, say, per day or per hour of use, so that the citizens and our council can know what is this costing, what is, in effect, the donation. Again, the fair, absolutely in support of that, completely. Maybe this is the time to look at if we find out the cost and the usage, how much we use it, how much the fair uses it. Is this a truck that we should sell to the fair board? Is this something that we use, or is this something that they use? I just think that now is the time to have the discussion, seeing how they're asking for the donation using this truck. So first off, if you had to guess, Jed, how much do you think it costs, like, per hour, or maybe even, like, let's say, an eight-hour day of using the water truck?
So their staff use the water truck, so it's not our staff that even does it? So they're, I mean, I don't remember how many gallons it even is. I've only looked at it a couple of times. But, so you got the cost of the water that they're using, but I do think that is metered, so we do track the water usage for it. And then the diesel, but I really don't know how often they're wetting down the track, depending on the event. So Greg might have a better explanation for that. I don't know.
One thing you could use, if you want to try to figure out, you know, sort of the nominal component of donation value, would be FEMA. When we have events, disaster events, they've got vehicle equipment rates for pretty much every piece of equipment. And I would have to assume water trucks would probably be on there because of the fires and stuff that they're also connected with. That might be a good resource to look at, to just give you a, you know, this would be an operational cost, because that figure does not include the personnel. Those are tracked separately from it.
And as Jed said, our personnel is not using it.
Right.
On the fair board. So that'd be-
So that would give you, that would give you one that would be, you know, sort of an established rate that you could look at to determine evaluation. What do we use it for other than the fair?
Every now and again, we use it to fill up the back truck. You know, if it's a ways away from a hydrant, we'd use it for that, and then spray down the streets. It's pretty limited use that we use it for. Honestly, at some point, I don't see there being an issue to donate it to the fair, and when the fire department gets rid of theirs, take on theirs, because it's new and better. So, but mostly, it's for cleanup of some sort. And if dirt's ever spilled on the road or whatever, and we can't get it all up with our other equipment, we wash things down with it.
Sure.
That's true.
All right. You don't see this as being a super expensive business?
No, I don't.
Sure. It's more-
I can go get the FEMA information. I can take it to the park board at this next park board meeting, if you'd like.
Sure. Now, that's, if you can find it out, wonderful. If not, thank you.
And that would just be, you know, hourly usage of a truck, of a water truck.
Yep. I also, I just want this to be known, donations for the fair support 100%. It's when the fair holds events outside of that time, I think it's a slippery slope for donations and giving, because, and maybe I'm wrong, but Memorial Day Madness is probably being run for profit to use that money then for the fair. But if the fair is run, the city is not involved in any of these, other than just getting out of the way and saying the fair is the fair. The parade, our police, all those things totally get it. Donations with gear and stuff. For the fair, I think we're all on board with that. If there's going to be more events outside of that, then it might be time to either think about own gear, or if we're not even going to use that truck, if we put that up for sale for you, I just don't want it to be, you know, our equipment, like I said, water. That cost keeps climbing for profit. That cost keeps climbing for profit for an outside group because I think that's dangerous if any other group were to come up and start asking for those things. Do we make any other donations of equipment for groups outside? Is this the only one?
As far as I know, this is the only one.
Okay, so that's exactly why I, I think that it's, I don't wanna set a precedent. I don't want it to become dangerous. But with that said, I would seek, uh, I don't, uh-
Mayor, I got one more comment.
Sure.
Just come to the top of my head.
Sure.
When they said that we don't run that truck and we get some other person in our vehicle, I think we better have a, uh, liability certificate, um, with the city being additionally insured, just to cover our stuff. So if they could provide that before they use it the first time, if this gets approved, um, we, we would appreciate that. Please make that into your motion, if you wouldn't mind it.
Well, I'm gonna make a motion based on those events that are listed and, uh, with the addition of that liability, we can ensure this.
Motion by Gesmi to approve with the proof of liability before the first event, which is May twenty-fifth?
Yes, and it, but it could possibly, I'm just talking out here. May fourteenth and, uh, May eleventh, you might need it for horse races.
Are they listed on there?
They're, they're not on the list that was the request or-
No, I looked at that list one, and when I speak with you a month ago.
A month ago, yeah.
Do we need to table this and then vote to approve with all of the events that you might use it, so that they're all included?
That doesn't really make sense.
It should be on the list. So-
I'm gonna rescind my motion.
Motion has been pulled-
Can you just add May eleventh as a tentative and then go from there?
Well, if there, when, uh, Greg spoke during public input, there were a lot of dates of events. If you need the water truck for anything more than May twenty-fifth, twenty-sixth, the Fourth of July event, September twenty-eighth and October fifth, we might wanna revise this list and put it before the next council meeting, just to make sure that all the dates are covered. Does that sound fair to the council?
Mr. Rick?
Yes, sir.
Just for information, I pulled up the FEMA stuff, uh, not knowing the gallon, uh, capacity, but fifteen-hundred gallon water, uh, tanker truck, uh, its rate would be forty dollars and seventy-six cents. So forty dollars and seventy-six cents an hour.
Okay.
Forty bucks a scale.
Okay. All right.
Just right for I, FYI.
Yeah, um, it's probably close to fifteen-hundred gallons or a thousand gallons.
All right. Uh, we will table this, uh, we'll update the dates that it's needed for the fair and-
I'll bring it to the next council with an updated date.
Perfect. And, uh, the motion was rescinded from Mr. Gesmi, so. All right. So that brings us to reports. Joint Powers Trail Board, if anybody would like to speak to that. It's all right, it's, it's still technically winter, so, you know.
Yeah.
Uh, the EDA met on March seventh. Laura, would you like to handle that one?
Um, we have, um, eight lots under contract right now for Hardwood Estates. So that's pretty exciting. And then we're in the process of getting the plat recorded at county. That's where we're sitting right now.
Thank you. Uh, Public Works Park Board, March seventh.
I wasn't there.
Laura? I wasn't there either. I was there, but I was in the audience.
Neil or, uh, Jed, you wanna report on that one?
Um, most everything we talked about is on tonight's agenda. Uh, we did have a public comment about the swans, um, uh, both sides of the issue. And also the sportsman's club was there and talked about the, the trout and the DNR, uh, stocking the, the trout pond.
Can I just, just to be on the record with that? We've been audited by a group that, we've, we've gotten a passing grade. It's not just some pond that, so the people that are-
So I've, uh, when our swan passed away, I reached out to several different entities, um, looking for another swan. Um, the, a few of them were familiar with our pond and just gave me a, just raving, um, uh, what's the? They love it. They think it's perfect habitat. Um, when they, uh, they would hatch the, the, I can't remember what they call it, the, the babies, and they take them to Iowa, uh, they would comment on what good health the, the, the young ones were in. So we've never had issues short of this one person complaining about it, so, thank you.
Uh, Library Board.
Yes, um, what do we talk about? Oh, uh, updated the sick and safety policy and the new, um, doors will be, uh, helpful but easier. They'll be in by the end of the month.
Push button, right, for the front?
Yeah.
Yeah, cool. Uh, Police Commission met on March twelfth and Chief, the, uh, firearms disposal and then, uh, Resolution two seven four-one that was in the consent agenda.
Yeah, both, both are on the agenda tonight. The other item was the AEDs. So Police Commission directed, uh, the AEDs, one to the, uh, Cannon Senior Center and one to St. Ansgar's Church. We were able to get the third one working and we decided, uh, with the real ambitions occurring at John Birch Park, that we would add it, um, to there, go get mounted into one of the dugouts, to be determined once that's completed. But it'll be in a sheltered area, but still available to anybody, um, within that field complex.
Wonderful. Thank you, Chief. Uh, we're gonna go around the horn. Jed, anything you'd like to add?
Uh, April's, April's, uh, water, we're gonna flush hydrants, uh, first few weeks of April. Can't believe we're already here.
With all that snow on the road?
Uh, and mentioning the snow, uh, there's possibility of snow, uh, looks like Thursday night, um, and then into the weekend. So just remind people to stay off the str- or not park on the streets so that our crews can get cleaned up, especially if it's heavy wet snow, it's just that much more difficult. Um, depending on weather, uh, our two construction projects, uh, Hardwood Estates and, uh, the, uh, twenty-third, twenty, or twenty-twenty-three, twenty-twenty-fourth project are gonna start going. Um, the contractor wants to look at, uh, um, temporary water connections for, for the homes that are, you know, for, yeah.
Mm-hmm.
Um, and that's all I got.
Darren, anything else you'd like to add?
Only that, uh, they did start clearing trees for the twenty twenty-four project, so summer's here. So even though it's gonna snow, so nothing further.
I've already been asked, uh, with the MinDOT stuff, uh, on Highway nineteen, is there replacement that's going to happen? Or I know the state law, it has to go somewhere in the city limits, but it doesn't have to be the same spot as where those trees were, correct? I don't know if they'll be, you mean the trees?
Yes.
I don't know if they'll be replacing anything.
I can kinda answer that one. Um, MinDOT came in with their arborists and, uh, the trees that were, had any disease or they didn't like, they took down. And I don't think they are replacing anything in the, the right of way.
Really? Okay. I thought it was, even if they take it down, it could be at the park, it could be everywhere. If you take a tree, you gotta plant the tree, don't you?
Um, I know, uh, there's certain like grants, um, that if you take, that, that's a one-for-one, you take down a tree, you plant a tree, you know, with, with grant money. But as far as the state goes, I think they're trying to get them out of the right of way. So they don't have to, um, the, the maintenance of, of those trees.
All right.
Are they grinding the stones too, Jed? They should.
At a later date.
At a later date, but that's gonna be the same with us and all our stuff.
Laura, anything you'd like to add? Chief?
Well, Mayor, you touched on it briefly, uh, asked it Jed, uh, snow. Amazingly, this winter, we've, uh, managed to escape pretty lightly.
Yeah.
However, the forecast does appear to be plowable snow. Just wanna remind people, do not go by, you know, oh, it's only half an inch. Half an inch of wet, heavy snow might have Public Works out, especially if temperatures are gonna drop. Uh, we try to put notice on our social media pages. But the best thing to do is if there's, you know, snow on the ground, don't park on the streets. That way you guarantee the charter can get a ticket and they're told. And we don't like doing either one. It's just part of what we have to do to make sure when Public Works comes out, they can just get those streets cleared and not have to come back and clean up an additional expense that loses taxpayers.
Thank you, Chief.
Sarah? Neil? Just one thought is, uh, in the legislative session, they're bringing up, uh, bills that would restrict our zoning, uh, municipality, zoning in municipalities. That's something we might wanna keep an eye on. Um, it, it seems like if, if, uh, they take away the city's rights for doing our own zoning, it, it really, it takes away our rights, right? And so, um, keep an eye on that. I've been following it a little bit and, uh, as it goes through, it, it hasn't gotten a lot of traction, but it's, it's starting to, they're starting to make amendments and, uh, um, we should be paying attention.
Do you know what that legislation is in response to? Is it a suburban thing or is it?
You know, I think they're throwing a blanket over whole state.
Okay.
Where it should be something that should be a seven-county metro thing.
Mm-hmm.
And, uh, um, it's, it's focusing on affordable housing, uh, multifamily, go as high as you want. Doesn't matter what our code says. Doesn't, it does not restrict parking, you know, it's, parking is one-to-one where a lot of them are one and a half to one. Uh, there's a lot of stuff that, um, just in the top of the, of the list that does affect our code. So it's something that we might wanna pay attention to as the session goes on.
Thank you, Neil. Laura, anything from you?
Good.
Lisa?
I have the update for the chamber.
Great.
Um, Maggie came in this morning, let me know that there's gonna be an egg hunt, egg hunt at St. Ansgar's. I was right about St. Ansgar's and then I said hunt wrong. Um, but at ten AM, this is Saturday the thirtieth. And then the Easter Bunny's gonna be at Swan and Bauer for pictures from nine till eleven.
All right, thank you. Ryan? Derek? Dan? Steve?
Ted? Um, did you approve that new lawnmower purchase?
Yes.
Is that for anybody here right now?
Took a look at it? What, what's the size of the deck on that?
Is that why he's here, wondering if we're gonna get it or?
No, I think he was here to argue his side of the, the Swan debate.
Oh, oh, oh.
That's all right.
Uh, I just wanna say, uh, I support the school completely. Uh, if you are, if you've gotten that, uh, questionnaire, be sure to fill that out so that they can get as accurate of data as they can regarding the referendum, the, or the levy that they've been talking about. Uh, also, congratulations to the boys' basketball team, uh, section finals, best season, uh, on record that they've had. An amazing run, uh, it was a fun season. It was fun to watch those guys make that run in Rochester. Also, I, I try not to miss any groups. Uh, congratulations to Robotics, their event, I think, was up in Duluth. And then the Math League, I think they also made it to St. They got their, the marching band through the hallways and the send-off too. So the school has done a great job of being very supportive, uh, and I hope that, uh, the community of Cannon Falls can in turn be supportive of these teams as well. Uh, we really, um, down in Rochester, we had a good crowd, uh, for the second and third game down there. The first game during the week against Lewiston Eltora, that was pretty quiet, but second and third game, really good crowd. So glad to see everybody show up to one there. So, uh, that's all I've got. With that, I would accept a motion to adjourn.
Ooh.
Diane and then Jepson, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? We are adjourned. Thank you, everybody.